Let us pray. Heavenly Father, once again, we are here for the benefit of our most precious possessions, our children. Lord, we'd ask that you would lead, guide, and direct us through this meeting, that we would do our very best for them. We'd like to be thankful for the meal that was prepared this evening, for the nourishment of our body, and our bodies stood service to you. Lead, guide, and direct us, Lord, and we'll ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Robert Cole?
Here.
James Davis?
Here.
David Duke?
Here.
David Green?
Here.
Harmon Harden?
Here.
Stan Howard?
Here.
Jason Lamb?
Here.
Sean Bridget?
Here.
Mark Williams?
Here.
Principal State?
Tonight, I just want to speak, talk a little bit about the teachers, not only the teachers in my county, but I think about the teachers across the whole county. As you know, teachers are the most complicated jobs today, that demands broad knowledge of curriculum, safe standards, awareness of dozens of safety drills, enthusiasm, caring attitude, and a love of learning. Knowledge of discipline, and classroom management strategies, heightened school safety concerns, and most importantly, a desire to make a positive impact on the lives of young people. Our teachers work tirelessly to create new ways to reach students with no regards to their race, gender, culture, cultural language, or any other differences that make us unique as community. They serve as surrogate parents, counselors, medics, mediators, social workers, social media police, dieticians, the list goes on. They come to work daily, and generally love and support students in the mission. Our teachers expect that all students can and will achieve in their classroom. They don't give up on underachievers. They rebuild students' confidence daily, and encourage them that every step back is a building block to success later on. In other words, they prepare them for adult life experiences. Our teachers are in their classrooms early in life if students are struggling. Our teachers form strong and meaningful relationships with students and their families, and show students daily that they care about them as people. Our teachers are warm, accessible, enthusiastic, and caring. Our teachers build community in classroom by classroom. They are involved in school-wide committees and activities, and often they can be found in gyms and little league fields cheering on their students. Our teachers make the difference. I'm proud to serve with these teachers daily, along the front lines of educating our students. I'm humbled by their compassion, commitment, and influence they have on our future. So join me in thanking our teachers tonight, so let's give them another call. Now, I'm going to tell you a little bit about them. Now, make sure you, Miss Carmen Ray, and a few other teachers head up to the Junior Beta Club here, so they're going to talk about some of their accomplishments this year. As you said, this is part of the Beta Club. We have close to thirty members in our Beta Club this year, and I have some that thank for Miss A is here to help. Miss Keesha Ambesu also helps in Beta Club too, but they're going to tell you some things that we've done this year. Abby?
National Beta is the largest nonprofit educational youth organization in Nashville. It's committed to recognizing high academic students who are worthy and mature and worthy characters. The Beta Club focuses leadership skills and reinforcement skills to everyone. Our goal is to support and encourage young students to learn and evolve, and because of our drive, it's an important organization. Some of the projects that we've completed this year are slappy roads and several area gear bags for area transportation. We also play with candy, make thank you cards, and gave out appreciation baskets for our students. We attended the state convention in Nashville, where we received five same awards, three Mitchell design, ten Mitchell design, service learning showcase, woodworking, and mixed media work. We collected items for Operation Christmas Child, and assembled several boxes to be donated to Samaritans. We have basically, the Bradley County Healthcare Institute, Christmas Carol student, visit their Christmas. Basically, we have a school-wide organization, which is driving the different states. L S A is believing in one community, this is a nonprofit health organization, but we have a church. Church is a public school. We just grab our school.
Sir Flower. Thirty five hundred dollars.
We are now in progress of collecting, having to clean up items to be donated to the water. And also, we go back to the nursery home later this month, like we go with our residents who live there.
So this is something we've done. We try to do a service project once every month, and these are some of the things we've accomplished this year. Also, when they were, if you'll pay to look at the pictures, this was one of the competitions that was, which girls did this? So they have received one of the awards. As you can see, some of the kids are holding up the flags we received at state, and we competed against other counties in Tennessee. And with earning these five flags, we have an invitation to go to Nashville this summer. Thank you.
Next item, approval of consent agenda, which was approved, say. Got an emotional approval in second? In discussion. Roll call, please.
Robert Cole?
Yes.
James Davis?
Yes.
David Duke?
Yes.
David Green?
Yes.
Harmon Harden?
Yes.
Stan Howard?
Yes.
Jason Lamb?
Yes.
Sean Bridget?
Yes.
Mark Williams?
Yes. Item number one, discussion action regarding approval of contract manure for director of school, Dr. James Jones?
Move to approve.
Second. Got an approval in second? Dr. Jones, you got something?
Yeah, I want to do a little, uh... I'm going to destroy some things that we've been doing this year. Just test them out. I was telling her, my last degree was in 2009, so I probably have to have a power point for it. But I graduated from Polk County High School in October, just to give you a little background information about me. This is my thirty-second year in education, and all those years have been in Polk County. I've been a classroom teacher, an assistant principal, a principal, a supervisor, a football coach, a basketball coach, supervisor testing, director of schools for thirteen years. Next, I achieved a bachelor of science degree from East Tennessee State University, a master's degree in administration supervision, an educational specialist degree, and then a doctorate degree from Tennessee State in Nashville, and I'm also a registered nurse. Vent cafeteria roof, let's just cut right to the good stuff. So, everybody knows what happened with the roof. You all went with it, went through it at the same time I was going through it. So, I guess the number-one complaint, the number-one thing personally for me to deal with is when I made the statement that we knew there were leaks. I didn't know that there were leaks. But to put it in context for you, it was a progression of leaks. When it started out, we had small leaks, and yes, it was back in the summer. But I was working with Gilbert Firestone and our maintenance people, and we were working on the leaks as we went, and I would say, Gilbert, you know, what do you think about this? Well, I think we can fix it, we can patch it up. We're trying to make it because we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so, as it got worse, there, this is a flat roof, and there are drains all over the top of this roof, where the water drains to those drains, and then flows out, flows out to drain ponds. And what happened was, as the roof got older and older, the section around the drain started to pull away from the drains, and that's when we started getting big leaks, you know, that we were dealing with on a colossal level. That was very alarming for everybody, me too, and for all your parents, I know it was. And when it was reported to me that that's what was going on, we contacted roofing places and worked on getting the roof fixed. They had to come back two or three times during that process to reseal those drains, and finally, we didn't get it fixed. Now, I'm very happy about that. I'm not happy about how long it took. I know some of you aren't either, but that is the way that it happened, and at least now it's fixed. Now, I'm very happy about that. I'm happy that the county commission is working with us to help with those costs. New positions at the central office, I hear some things about that. Again, you have to put things in context, because two of the people that are at the central office asked if they could go part-time, and that's Jean Bramlett and Loretta Moles. And so, we did that, but their responsibilities didn't change, so we had to shift some of the work to other people. Well, as you all probably know, Dr. Bell and Dr. Giblin have really gone above and beyond, and just really sought after grants that have been very beneficial to our students, including Verizon Grants and now Gear Up Grants. And so, part of the duties that Dr. Bell had, we had to shift also. And so, Zach Swatton came in as supervisor testing, which was Dr. Bell's old job, and he also became director pre-k, which was Jean Bramlett's other job, because she's also special ed coordinator. And Dr. Matty became in for the first time in history, and RTI position was funded specifically from the state department this year. And you all know about the safety grant that was applied for, and we achieved a certain amount of money, but we had to have a person in charge of the safety grant. And also, new attendance laws, as we talked about in his board meetings, as we went through, a person had to be in charge of the new attendance laws, with setting up meetings with parents on tier three. So, this is why we came to these two positions, and this is how we came to them. I've heard, well, every year, I know one person in particular that said this stuff, higher than, we spend more money than we bring in. Sometimes we do. I can think of different times off the top of my head where we started the Pila program, and we did that after school was started, which was, well, right at school started, which means the budget is past, you know, and ours is past the May term. So, that did happen, and it was taken from fund dollars. I can remember adding a math teacher in the middle of the year, because we had to, the numbers were too big, we had to add a math teacher. It's not like we're adding, you know, condos for the central office staff to go to in Florida. It's for homeschool programs, it's for teachers, it's for things that we are required to add, and it costs money. Everything that we add costs money. None of these things can be done without board approval. When we add a teacher, the school board has to approve those salaries, so. And as we talked about, the Pila program, we're going to move on now and talk about some of the more positive things. Dr. Tamara Lanning is our Pila program, which stands for Polk Innovative Learning Academy. We are expanding these roles, we expanded this year to include elementary grades, as you all know, and as we went through step-by-step, as we went through it. We are hoping to even further expand that next year to include some subjects in high school. And what we're trying to do here is, it's about an ever-changing population of students. I know that even when I went to get my doctorate at Tennessee State, you could only take one class off campus. So I was driving to Nashville for every class, three or four times a week, you know, every night, and now, not that it's any less, it's just the way that times have changed, you can take an entire doctorate program online now, and go in and meet your professors and do those kinds of... So, it's not, it's not less valuable, it's just different than it used to be. High schools are changing. We don't want to be five years from now going, our homeschool students are, you know, are going somewhere else. We took, last year, we started taking a progressive approach to the homeschool programs in an effort to meet changing desires that students have or families have for the needs of education. And hopefully, we will continue to expand that, we will continue to offer more diversified programs, we'll be able to, to hopefully add some secondary-level courses next year. And it's hard to commit, because everything that we add costs money, you know that. But this is one of the really great things that we have going on right now. Is it, is it greater than that regular ed program? No, I don't mean it like that. It's all part of a puzzle that fits together to meet the diversified needs of an ever-changing student population. I have to put this in, because every time, it's kind of funny, but I did it for a joke. Every time I go to the grocery stores, Dr. Jones, when are you going to fix that bridge? Well, we don't fix bridges, so, we're an educating body, we... I'd put that in for a little while. Well, where are we going? Where are we now? Where are we going? Now, let's look at secondary education for just a minute. We're involved in the Gear Up Grant. So, in a nutshell, what the Gear Up Grant, and I know we've talked about that several times, Board, it's an opportunity for students to be more ready for real life when they graduate high school. For example, we will increase the opportunities for students to gain certifications. For example, we're going to increase things like semen certification, which is a big certification that you get, and then you're much more likely to get a job at certain companies or factories. Very important. We're going to be able to offer that next year. We're going to be offering CNA licenses, Certified Nursing System, which is great, because when you graduate, you can go right into the hospitals or wherever and work and earn money. So, I know that in the, like, ten years ago, I can remember the big push was, everybody's going to go to college. Remember that? And everybody's going to excel in four years of upper-level math. Thank God, they can go through high school now, because math was, was hard. Things like Algebra II, geometry, physics, chemistry, those upper-level courses. But the hope is that more and more and more, just like the Pila program, we're hoping to expand it. Same thing with the CTE program. We're hoping to expand it, we got the Gear Up Grant that's helping us with the financial burden of some of that, to expand the opportunities for people to be worker-ready, life-ready. We're involved in partnership with Mechatronics with Cleveland State Community College. Mechatronics is another certification that we are going to be offering, and it is also a certification for many factories and different kind of workplaces, that if you have that certification, you're much more likely to get a job. We'll be offering eight industry certifications in six programs to stay. So, as you all know, probably, most of you know, that the ACT is the gauge at which colleges test to see if you're ready to come to college. That's one of the ways. And so, obviously, we have been trying to work to increase ACT readiness, and we have a ten percent increase in ACT readiness, test marks, in the last ten years. I think that's directly a really good thing, although it's not, you know, a huge jump, it's an increase. And it's an increase in the very test that they're going to give to see if you get into their college. So, again, life readiness adds into it. We have a twenty-four-seven access account for every student, where they can go online, they can do a prep account for ACT and SAT testing. And if you have a student in high school or even junior high, encourage them to take as many practice tests as they can, so that when they get to the test, it's not the first time that they've seen it, or even the second or third time, you know, because part of it will be adjusting their mind to the format of whatever that test is. And I can tell you that from twenty, okay, thirty-two years ago, when I had to take it as an exit exam for East Tennessee State University, it was a lot of multiple choice and more direct answers. Now, you can bet it's mostly reading. So, just to sneak that in, please read with your child. It is the times tables of language arts. Please read. Even Christmas and Easter, thirty minutes every day with your child, it will mean that all the difference in the world, one forward in your education. Dual enrollment and dual credit on the team. I love this. I told you all, I think, ten years ago, when I was earlier in my tenure superintendent, that we wanted to increase more hours, more, more, more. I want to do more of this every year, and that is take courses at high school that you get college credit for. Isn't that a great idea? I know that, I can remember in years past, at one of my neighbor, Bradley County, I knew a guy that graduated Cleveland State when he graduated high school. So, wouldn't that be amazing? But I love stuff like this, more and more and more opportunities. We don't have enough, I don't think, but we're getting there. I mean, it's, it's inching forward, and I really want to push this. Again, life readiness, career readiness is the big push now. Remember when everybody was going to go to college ten years ago, and we didn't even, the CTE programs were dwindling to nothing, they were cutting everything, cutting all these programs? Now, they see that not, not everybody's going to college, and not everybody can pass college, and not everybody needs to pass college. But every person has a life, and they need to be life-ready, and so we've had to really push that back in, in education in the last, I would say, four years, so that students who do go to college are ready, students who don't go to college are more life-ready. It's a good push. I think it's a more well-rounded push than the origins of No Child Left Behind, where everybody was, you know, going to be physicians, which is not reality. We need bricklayers, we need welders, we need all kinds of things like that. And continuing, you can now take pre-cal for three hours, which is one of the hardest classes in college. Take that as a dual enrollment class, the CTE programs, where you can take. The college entry level program, this is something that's starting this year and next year, this program. It's really wonderful, because now, you can do video modules, and students can take a test, and test out of a certain college course and get college credit for it. For example, if you already know, let's say I need to take chemistry when I get to college, and I work on these modules, I can go in, if I think I'm ready to take the chemistry test, I can go into this program that we'll be having, and take the chemistry test and not have to take that class in college, I'll have my college credit for it. Isn't that amazing? And again, that's a lot of subjects, thirty-seven. So, again, we're building on college readiness, we're building on life readiness. And again, I promise I won't be taking the credit for all these things, you know, we all know better than that. This is all a team, this is all us working together, plus, what, part of the things that the state department is saying, if you'll apply for this grant, we'll help you this way. All of us work as a team. I mean, when we talk here in a minute about our elementary schools being five rated schools, it's not because Dr. Jones sat down there and, you know, it's because we have really hard-working teachers, the work of the team, you know, the principal is there to help them and give them the things that they need, and training, whatever, but it's part of a team, all the good things that happen in our school system. I'll be the first to tell you, it's not, I mean, I hire people, I place people, but the teachers are really the worker bees that are getting skills, the preschool and administrators facilitate and help them, you know, so it's a team effort, all of it, any of it is. We just found out Friday, we've applied for a parent, it's one grant for a parent school, middle school program to help with pre-engineering, such computer science, computer science and application development, apps development. You know how important apps have become. I mean, my mother will turn eighty-one, and she's downloading gifts and apps on her phone, and my nephew is ten, and he's doing the same thing. So, those kind of things are really important, but... So, uh, those kind of things are really important, but, uh, pre-engineering, I mean, we're going to receive $30,000 for Basin School Middle Program, $30,000 for Polk County, or for Chillicothe School, for pre-engineering program. So, another thing to start, I know I'm beating a little dead horse here. Another thing to start, getting them ready for college readiness and life readiness. The younger the better, you know? With it, with it. And all those things would help us become a pathway school. And, uh, this is a big mouthful, but I'll try to summarize it in a few sentences. A pathway school would be a school that meets several criteria and those criteria would be building on, you guessed it, college readiness and life, career readiness. And when you become a pathway school, uh, there's a lot of grant money, this specifically is type of $110,000 grant, that will go toward college readiness and career readiness. Getting kids ready for life after the grant. So you all know, uh, about the Barison Grant, we've been doing that. We're on the verge of extending that for renewal. We have applied, we have been assured that we are one of the finalists. So, pretty excited about that. Are iPads the, you know, the magical educational beast? No, not really. But, I would think that if you can offer kids a way to learn, it's digital, they're automatically going, how many of y'all's kids play on iPads or cell phones, basically run the same operating system? Yeah, they don't put them down. So we're touching another area of their lives that will help with their educational process. Is it that simple and wonderful? No. No, what we found was some teachers said, you know, I don't like having to use it so much because it takes away from my time on drilling. I want to use it some, you know? So we've had to tweak as we go with different personalities, different classroom personalities, but it's still overall a good thing. Well, this is pretty exciting, uh, as we talked about life and career readiness. We are, uh, we are entering partnerships with area businesses, uh, Polymer Components, which is right over by the jail. And they are going to be taking some of our students and do work-based learning. They'll be able to earn money, they'll be able to earn Mechatronics hours toward their certifications. And then, uh, in the basin area, Angios Systems, same thing. They're, they've been great about everything. They're tickled to death to be taking some students and working with them and continuing to expand on life and career readiness. And that, I know, I say it every few minutes, but that's the real buzz in education today. Success rate. Schools and grades at the twelve of Polk County School System are ranked top, the highest you can get, and that is on student growth. Now, that is a wonderful thing. This is directly translated to teachers working hard in that building. It doesn't mean that teachers that don't, you know, that school systems are not a five don't work hard. They do. But, I'm just telling you, that's why the teachers in that building work really hard. Can James Jones take the credit for that? The credit I can take is hiring good teachers to put in those places, but I don't go and work with that kid every day, the teachers do. And they should get the credit. The principals, the principals should take the credit for facilitating, helping that teacher and helping with their needs and helping with their schedules. But the real hero here is not James Jones, it is the teachers. Now, not to get this confused with, uh, student achievement, because student achievement in our county, we can use a boost in the art, we really can. And what that means is, student growth, it's a hard concept to stick with. And believe me, we, we train and train teachers and myself on it all the time. But, growth is how far you take a student when they enter your classroom, no matter if they're on a fourth grade level or an eleventh grade level, how far you take them from where they are to where they went in that school year. That's growth. And our teachers do a great job with growth. Now, achievement is, can they pass the standardized test that is geared toward an average that is statewide, comparable townings-wide? And, we could do, we could do the, the state, the state average to be better in achievement. But, I am proud that we have, uh, the schools that we do that are achieving that growth because sometime that growth, if you keep giving it five, sometime that's going to show up and they're going to start showing it in the achievement part. So, make the school for student growth. Our schools and grades 55 are ranked as a five-star. That's success. Can James Jones take credit for it? Not all of it. I mean, I hire people, I, I try to pick the right teachers, I try to dig into their background and make sure that we're making them get hired, but remember, I couldn't teach kindergarten, or at least, I don't think I could. Because, you know, they're crying one day, I'm not sure I can get down on that, that kind of young level and be that kind of patient teacher. I taught middle school for 14 years, 12 years. And so, I can relate it really well to second graders. But, I am very proud that our elementary schools are five for growth, how far they take a student in that school year. If I teach second grade and I have a student that is in the, on the kindergarten level and I get him, but I take him to where he should be at the first grade, I took him for a year's growth. And that means a five-star actually takes them about two years. So, it's good. It's a good thing. Am I, you know, am I ready to jump off a bridge over it? No, because again, we have the other side of this, which is what I just said. Achievement. And we can be higher in achievement, we can. We need to be higher in achievement. We don't ever, you know, it's like, it's like people say about being good enough in a, on a sports team. You ever, you ever, Ms. Hyman, you've been coaching for, golly, none of them have been alive.
Probably.
Another joke, tough crowd. Have you ever seen a team that's good enough?
No.
No.
Thought I had one this year.
Who told us? Well, what I'm trying to say is, no, we can't ever be complacent. We can't start and say, well, we were a five-rated school, we don't need to do as much. No, 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 no. We have a long way to go in, in, on the achievement side and we can really be working and striving toward raising those achievement scores. Another good thing that we've done over the past, I don't know, it's been a few years now, is get all the elementary schools on the same assessment. Because I know, excuse me. I know that in years past, we've used different assessment tools, we let a principal use one more to their liking, or a small group of teachers. We've really been working on getting everybody on the same page with iReady so that it would be more congruent, so that teachers could plan together better and collaborate better with each other. And, and you, you know, anybody can argue whether iReady is the best tool or not, or I think this is better, that's better. Uh, we decided in working with the State Department that we were going to use iReady, which is a good program. Are there better ones? I, you know, anybody can argue that yes or no, whatever program you like better, but these are the ones that we use and I think they're pretty very good. Anybody?
Uh, you went to my floor with that.
You can go back?
Yeah.
Is that it?
It's not.
Uh? Tell me, show me what I'm doing. So, in the grant process, uh, Mr. Swafford just finished that yesterday and submitted that to the state, but through the process, we have, uh, applied for and received two At Basin, two pre-Ks in lower area and then one pre-K that's general ed. And what that means is, the lottery pays for these four directly from the State Department. We pay for this in the general ed. Pre-Ks are extremely important. I mean, there's been all kinds of studies done that, uh, pre-K students seem to do better or more adjusted for, again, readiness, but for kindergarten than students that did not go to pre-K. And, keep in mind, this is a kindergarten teacher, a kindergarten aide, and then supplies. It's a pretty good chunk of money, but we have evaluated that, think it's worth it. Emotional support. Well, we could see this coming and I like to think of things as like, in my experiences from going for years, 32 years is a long time. So, I can remember that the family structure and how it's changed in the, in the last 32 years. For example, many, many grandparents are raising their grandkids children now as compared to when I started, not very many. Happens a lot now, the family dynamics have changed some. It seems like we have more single-parent homes than we used to when I started. Things like that. And so, uh, it's hard to judge the emotional toll that, that different things have on students. I know Mr. Wally is here and he works with middle school and elementary students and, and thank goodness we have him because we could use another Wally, really. Because kids are dealing with many more emotional problems than we think they are and than they used, than they're used to be because of the different change in dynamics of the family structure, or at least that's one of the reasons that I, I think. But we have, uh, again, Mr. Wally works with both schools and we do have, uh, people coming in like center stone and working with students with current profession and trying to help. It's not near enough. I, I can hear it. It's hard to even tell you how much we need more of these people. The tough part is VP doesn't pay for those people very well. It's still one of those things, well, we gotta have math, well, so they have, you know, they don't pay for people to work with their emotional problems like they do, people to work with their math problems. And so it's always a tough gig to work, chisel that money out, you know? Most of you all, especially elementary, know about the Read to Be Ready Grant. Uh, this is our fourth year straight that we've applied and, uh, received the Read to Be Ready funds and this is a summer reading program in hopes that, I mean, I can remember when I was in elementary school, we, you know, I didn't look in another book, from about the end of May to the middle of August or somewhere. But, we're hoping that these reading programs and the things that we're able to add extra will help bridge the gap on students that are not doing as well with reading. Junior baby club. We know that, uh, the junior baby clubs are getting stronger. I can remember when the baby club started at the, there was an elementary school level. It's done nothing but be one, another one of those things that encourage kids to come to school and get them more involved so they like school more and be able to express some of their talents. You know, I, I like that so many programs are for squeaky wheels, you know, that need a specific kind of help. It's good to have this one that kind of rewards people for being on the upper, the upper end of, uh, trying to work hard to get better grades and those kind of things. So, that's a, that's a good thing, that support. Virtual field trips, we're now working with Google Destinations, uh, toward incorporating virtual field trips more and more in the classroom. And you all see that with the, the vision things, vision goggles, where the kids are walking their way through Smithsonian, uh, historical museums and things like that. Again, just another way to reach the student at a level that you might not reach them in a regular ed classroom on an everyday level. For example, I went to elementary school. It was in rows and nobody talked and the quieter your room was, the better the teacher was. Remember that? It's just not that way now. I mean, it's interactive and iPads and phones and computers and, uh, virtual machines and all kinds of things that again are trying to reach an ever-changing student population. I think, I think that we do this very well in our county. And one of the things, one of the reasons is because the school board supports spending money on electronics and digital data and things like that to keep us up to date. Not only up to date, but we usually, we usually do very well in comparing, in comparing our school system to other counties on computer progression and things like that. We, you know, I was teaching, you had to get those test scores, dig through, and I know teachers do that now, but these two ladies help with basically all the school systems. And what they do is they dig through test scores and they pull out things that are getting their attention and, uh, and they work with teachers and even groups of students if you're asked to, to figure out what kind of focus there needs to be and how much focus there needs to be. For example, if I'm a teacher and Jennifer Williams comes to me and says, we've been looking at these test scores and we see that you really should be working on calculus more. And I go back and I incorporate more calculus stuff. So, that's what we use these two ladies for. They're both experts in their field, uh, 40-plus years of experience, good high levels. So, it's like, there is now an SRO at every school. Thank you, thank you County Commission, thank you School Board, thank you Sheriff's Office, they all three worked together to help achieve that. they all three worked together to help achieve that, don't let that happen. We're almost completely having a buzzer at every front door, almost everywhere. And, uh, I do think that's important. I think that, uh, those buzzers at least make us feel a little more safe. I mean, you don't know what goes through the mind of that kind of person, you don't know what would trigger them, but it has to be at least some kind of deterrent, you would think, to have to not have an open door, the front door, you know, to have to buzz in. Looking ahead, well, I know that, uh, most people's minds are on near schools, whether you want them or whether you don't, uh, still the buzz, and, and the County Commission, blessed us with Charles Chuck Land, that they purchased for us to purchase the foot news for it all in some time in the future. Uh, as I said before, we want to increase homeschool program with Dr. Lanning. We want to continue increases in work-based learning. We want to continue working certifications, expand them as much dual credit, as much certifications that we can to meet, to meet career readiness and power of the... We also want to increase after-school programs. We've worked in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club and helped with transportation, with transportation for them. And we also want to increase credit for the opportunities. Not everybody is going to go to Dill and Roma, they won't be able to do it, you know, they won't be able to make achievements that high, not everybody. So, uh, here's how credit for company works. Let's say, now I'm taking math ten, and, and I, for whatever reasons, I was not able to pass the class, but I fell within, say, five points, I made a sixty-five. So, we have programs where you can go in and sit where you are on the computer, and when you reach a passing grade, what is that, Joel, do you remember what grade recovery passed in the eighth or something? On the computer program, I don't quite remember what that is, but, but anyway...
Seven.
Seven. Well, anyway, when they reach that point, and they get credit for that class, they didn't have to not graduate, or have to not go on, you know, to the next year or whatever, have to retake the class, they can, they can achieve that. And, uh, you know, another way to meet student need, very... So, that's, that's all I have for the presentation. I think that, uh, I think that we do a lot of very positive things as a, as a whole. Again, I can't take credit for a lot of those things, but I'm involved in all those things in some way or another, so.
I have another one. Wait a second.
Wait a minute, first question.
I was just about to ask you, the process of, asking about the, doing on amount of electives that we are able to offer right now because of our budget situation. And, uh, I know that the Nesswaller Foundation is starting to be able to offer some online classes for foreign languages and things like that. Are you looking into anything like that as far as being able to incorporate, like you were talking about, Dill enrollment, things like that, with being able to expand the electives that the kids are going to be able to be offered in the near future? I know that started out in Upper East Tennessee for rural counties, and it's worked its way across the state, now even McMinn County's participating that some. Are we looking at anything like that?
So, so I can tell you that Dr. Lanning and I met this week, and that's one of the things that she wants to do, is offer high school electives through our program. But that, that's as far as I've gotten with that, but we're gonna be doing that through our program.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Robert Cole?
Yes.
James Davis?
Yes.
David Kueh?
Yes.
David Green?
Yes.
Carmen Harden?
Yes.
Stan Howard?
Pass.
Jason Lamb?
Yes.
Sean Bridget?
Yes.
Mark Williams?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion action regarding approval of Chilhawley Middle School football coach. Move it through. Got a motion? Save.
Question.
Jason, save.
Page two. The salaries on these, now, will this be the same as a head basketball coach at the middle school, or what's it called?
Yes.
Their kids' salaries?
Do we? Just, what is your salary as coach? I'm thinking it's...
I'm dead serious, I'm...
I think it's going to be, we agreed last time, they would have the basketball coach.
And non-school personnel are, when they do this, they have to go through the T double S double A training program.
They do, and they have to have hours of experience as a coach.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Robert Cole?
Yes.
James Davis?
Yes.
David Kueh?
Yes.
David Green?
Yes.
Carmen Ward?
Yes.
Stan Howard?
Yes.
Jason Lamb?
Yes.
Sean Bridget?
Yes.
Mark Williams?
Yes.
Item number three, discussion action regarding approval of overnight trip for Polk County High School girls' basketball to NTSU, State Department, I'm spreading the word.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Questions? Roll call, please.
Robert Cole?
Yes.
James Davis?
Yes.
David Kueh?
Yes.
David Green?
Yes.
Carmen Harden?
Yes.
Stan Howard?
Yes.
Jason Lamb?
Yes.
Sean Bridget?
Yes.
Mark Williams?
Yes.
Item number one, only a due, discussion action regarding approval of additional invoices that are listed on the next page. Move it through.
Second.
Got a motion, and save. Are there questions?
What's the, the university tuition? The university tuition?
The grant.
I don't know.
Yeah, we have, uh, we have special ed students.
Oh, okay.
And we have some...
That counts for that. Yeah, that's just flow through.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Robert Cole?
Yes.
James Davis?
Yes.
David Kueh?
Yes.
David Green?
Yes.
Carmen Harden?
Yes.
Stan Howard?
Yes.
Jason Lamb?
Yes.
Sean Bridget?
Yes.
Mark Williams?
Yes.
Drop it straight down to the information on item number one, Mrs. Hill to the best of all regarding cell phone policy.
I don't know if Miss Hill is here, uh, because I don't know her, but...
Item number two, Pam Heinman to the best of all regarding the path led. Coach?
Come on down.
You talk to me about it?
Yeah.
There's been discussion about the path policy, which I wrote probably four or five years ago, and you all had a copy of it before it went into operation. And one of the things that seems to be a problem is that there is that stipulation in there for a student athlete to participate in athletics, they have to have an eighty or above in every class. Now, Dr. Jones has expressed to me that he's built in many a phone call by angry parents because their child has a sixty-eight in math. And we just had baseball tryouts, and the first day of practice, we only had six players eligible because your board cards or progress reports came out the day before. However, when they realized, when they brought that sheet to me, that they were not going to be allowed to play, in particular, one example was, I had a seventh grade student had a sixty-eight in math the day the first practice happened. Lo and behold, the next day, I get a note from the teacher, he has a ninety-two. So, he, because he turned all his work in. Uh, there's a couple of middle school teachers in the room, and they'll tell you they love the policy simply because they get their work. If they're going to be an athlete in Chilhawley Middle School, it's very important for them to understand they're a student before they're an athlete. And it's not that the grade of eighty is something they cannot achieve, even a student who strokes, because I will say to the teacher, if they're loving anymore, is this the best decision you did? I have a sixth grade baseball player, he is ecstatic, he made the team, he runs around carrying a bat all day long and early, but he is absolutely over the charts and static. This is going to be really good for him. He can't maintain a name because he stroked his degree, but his parents won't go through the paperwork to get him a five-on-four or an IEP. So, therefore, I'm not going to punish that child when this teacher says he's turning in every paper, he just can't pass the test, she signed off on him, I'm going to let him play. So, the eighty is not a hard and fast rule, it's a motivator for these kids to have to sit out if they don't do their classroom work. And eighty simply means in the middle school that they're there, they turn in their work, they do their makeup work if they have to be absent, and they understand the concept of being a student before they're an athlete. So, there's where I'm coming from with the eighty and the policy.
So, answer this question for me, you did that or not, but I'm... So, if I'm, my name's Little James, and Little James has a seventy-eight because he's turning in so much today, can Little James bring that homework and get, bring his grade up to an eighty even today, tomorrow? It's not said in the six weeks, ever four weeks, it's a very fluid...
Once they go below eighty, as soon as it gets to eighty or above, they're reinstated. There's no two-week waiting period, there's none of that. However, some parents get upset because their Little James gets thrown in ISS for fighting in the bathroom, and Little James is three days in ISS, he misses three practices and three games. So, Little James better want to get that kid really back, okay? Because there is stipulations in there to stop the fighting, and if you do statistics, you understand that in the middle school, since this has been instigated, input into our curriculum, we've had less education. So, they are reinstated immediately once they turn to work in.
But you always check and lay low with that subject teacher and your, her liaison on the, the facts of the matter.
The fact remains that I have very few middle school coaches that are wanting to get in middle school this year, so I am the go-to person. My baseball coach is out of middle school, my boys' basketball coach is out of middle school, uh, my soccer coaches are not in middle school, I mean, you just go on and on. So, I check every single report card and progress report of every athlete in Chilhawley. So, I've been contacting these teachers once, every day on Skype, every day by text, are they there yet, are they there yet? I have three Skypes today, qualified, three more baseball players because they're working and they're working, so it's that simple. Speaking from a teacher perspective, I would prefer you leave it at a qualified, not a new student.
Any other questions?
That's really, that's not really up for a, a vote or anything, it's just...
No, I just said question. I kind of have a problem because I was that kid, I was struggling, I love football, everybody knows, knows I love football, I was a kid. I done the best I could, and when eighty was too late for me, I probably wouldn't have played football. And the trouble with you, you know, Deborah Williams, we had to go, I went every day to see Deborah Williams before I went to football, so she could help me in all the slugs, and try to get me crazy. It wasn't something that I was proud of, but it's something that I think may hold a lot of kids back. And this may be something that, you know, the kids before do, that might be the only thing that keeps them out of trouble with that sport. So, that's, that's part of the problem I have with it. Hey, I, I feel it's a pain in the butt, too. But personally, that's a situation I would...
I've got my daughter, I've got my daughter, and I'm trying to tell her, she has seven points, and she's...
Absolutely the best that child can do. And we know it's the best, does absolutely everything, and she is not held away, held back to her, and she needs to do it, she goes next to finish, she does it all. And so, that is never an issue. And as a classroom teacher, there are two, three, four years ago, I, I had a child who did my class all year, and never made eleven seventy-nine, but played basketball, played volleyball, played whatever, but it was the best that child could do. And every one of our teachers does that. So, we're willing to work with them and, and, and...
Most of the kids that we have are getting held out about that because of behavior related, it's not the magic of the school. And if they refuse to do what the teacher asks them to do, then there should be a consequence for that.
Any other questions? Moving over to the main page, informational, reading specialist update, school safety.
One or a couple things I've got to school safety, you're part of, these are PIS, one of the Wheeler, as Dr. Jones said in his presentation, in close to having all the schools, we have buzzer, injury cameras. So, these are the last two, Benton Elementary, Copper Basin Elementary that need those, every other school has them. So, um, this will be, this is not any of the key fobs on this, this is merely, um, the entry, buzzer, and the camera system, and then all the technology and the wiring and things for that, so that at least all the schools have the buzzer system in place. Uh, I'm still talking with Miss Davis, and then Miss Franklin, because Miss Franklin will talk about a couple more entries around bases, this is a junior school, we've been up there, the key fobs. So, that'll be kind of the phase two thing, but this, we can go ahead with, uh, you can see the prices there for, when I say the junior, I mean the layout. The layout. No, I'm not supposed to explain. So, those are your informational items there, and then the other thing about the reading, uh, is Polk County Schools entered with UT four years ago into a study. They did a big study, Allington and his group in Florida, a decade ago, about giving kids books, and that prevents summer slides. They wanted to try to replicate that in Tennessee when they came to UT. So, they asked Polk County Schools to join that, Greene County, several other counties to join that. So, years ago, we started giving kids in first grade, ten self-selected books, they come in here, for example, five hundred books laid out, they got to pick any ten they wanted. We did that in first grade, second grade, third grade. They called me the other day and said, "Report's not filing," but they were excited to report that, I don't know if you guys, that now that those kids have done that for three years, in third grade, and they took the T cap test. And not all the kids got them, they selected some to give the books, and some just got the coloring books. The kids that were given books scored significantly higher on the T cap. So, it's, it's coming out that we're doing really good things for Polk County, uh, and we can do things like give them books. The Read to Be Ready does that, plus, we know all the things they do with field trips and that type of thing. So, again, just that was a conversation two weeks ago, and I don't know if that the board knows that a lot of this stuff is going on in Chilhawley.
Quick question, um, on the cameras, uh, now, will this, we stayed, we talked about this before, is this going to be able to store in the cloud system where somebody can have access at home and all that?
Since we've got a lot of parents, your, your read, your summer rating program?
Yes.
Can you tell them what that is, and how a kid gets referred, and all that sort of summer, the summer rating program you do?
Well, we go through a selection process, uh, and so, they, they need to be a striving student, striving to prevent that summer slide. So, the teachers get together and go through that with the principal, and they come up with a list of kids to recruit. And then, so they send all those letter out, letters out to recruit kids, and, um, then the ones that come back, we decide how many teachers we need, uh, Miss Franklin...
The summer rating program you did?
Well, we go through a selection process, and so, they, they need to be a striving student, striving to prevent that summer slide. So, the teachers get together and go through that with the principal, and they come up with a list of kids to recruit. And then, so they send all those letter out, letters out to recruit kids. And then the ones that come back, we decide how many teachers we need. Miss Franklin did her own grant, we did one for Below the Mountains. Once you know that, you know how to write how much for, write a grant, for example, fifty-four thousand just for this year, and I can't remember what it was, forty-two thousand just for that. So, lots and lots of kids, if you put in that application, you get accepted. And it's a one-to-six ratio, parents. So, your child, if you come to that, six kids for every teacher, and then tons of field trips, tons of books are given to them, lots of good things going on.
So, the teachers make a recommendation list, and then it's up to the parents to get the paperwork into you to get them in the program?
Yes.
Okay.
Or to the, to the branch, yes.
I wonder if.
Yes.
Any questions?
Yeah, he said if there's any questions, just call it back tomorrow.
Yeah, it does involve, I don't know if it's going to, they give us at the high school.
Any other questions for Dr. Mack? Uh, school board, next advocacy for board decision.